Good morning. This is a public hearing on the Fairfield County subdivision regulation revisions. So, this has been a long time coming. It was a process that started prior to me returning. Kind of was put on the holding plate while the county engineer's office was working on their design manuals. And then we were kind of short-stacked. So, now that we're fully stacked up, we finished these up and have those in front of you tonight, today. And they'll be in front of the Regional Planning Commission tonight. So, I know that you know, but just in case, you know, someone in the audience would like to understand the regulations. They are the regulations that establish the standards for the division of land, both minor and major subdivisions. Minor being lot splits along the same roadways. Major being new subdivisions with new roads, with new utilities. It also specifies the designs, standards of how you lay out those subdivisions, as well as what public improvements are required. And then it includes mechanism specifications. And I have that with an asterisk because I'm actually where we're here today. Our subdivision regulations have road specifications, water specifications within the actual subdivision regulations right now. And we're actually removing those because the county engineer has created their own roadway design manual and their own stormwater design manual. So, we're pulling those specifications out and maintaining only the design of the subdivisions, of the layout, you know, the curvature of the roads, the length of the cul-de-sacs. Those specifications will still stay in the subdivision regulation. But wanting to know would all fall under those design manuals. The reason we are doing that is to help facilitate expedite, create streamlined review process as we move forward. It's the 21st century, we need to act like we're in the 21st century. We need to have a process that's in place that allows design to be flexible and allow the engineer to have a little more discretion on what takes place in those. Right now, if the developer wants to do anything different than what's in the subdivision regulations, it takes a variance through the Regional Planning Commission. It's a 30-day process when it could be a minor thing that the county engineer could just create a design exception to. A lot of communities are going this way and we feel that it's necessary. And I know that the commissioners have that same viewpoint as well. Yes, thank you. That's very helpful. I appreciate it. Just to give you a little background on the subdivision regulations, Fairfield County has had regulations since 1974. There were major updates in 1989 and 2003. And then over the past 20 years, just some minor revisions since 2003.
Holly, is there a prescribed period of time to do these reviews and make changes? Let's say a year from now, he said, "Oh shoot, we should have done this. Can we go back and change it?"
We can do that at any, even if it's three months from now, we see something, we can do that. I do say, you know, every five to 10 years, it's a good time to look at everything we're doing and see how we're, you know, benchmarking everything.
Thank you.
So, I already mentioned that the design manuals were adopted by Fairfield County and those are administered by the Fairfield County Engineers' Office. And then I have an asterisk here that we already had a lot of ensuing specifications that were pulled out years ago and adopted and administered by the Utilities Department. So, I didn't have those listed as being adopted last year because we already had those. I'm not going to go into details on this slide because I actually did that in my conversation on the last slide. This is what we are doing with this revision. And then this is the process. It's a little bit backwards from what most process would be. Typically, a planning commission would review and make a recommendation to the legislative body. But the way the Ohio revise code is written, we have to have a public hearing by the county commissioners. And then the county commissioners have to adopt the regulations. And then the Regional Planning Commission is required to vote a public hearing and then adopt the regulations after the county commissioners. This is a process that is outlined in 711 of the Ohio revise code. It is summarized by the Ohio County Commissioners Association. And then I had Amy Brown Thompson review it with me just to make sure that we were following everything correctly. So, this is the process that we believe is correct based upon both the ORC and the CCAO. So, with that, we are here to answer any questions. And then we'll also be holding our public hearing tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the Regional Planning Commission meeting.
If I could ask if there's anyone here that would like to say, an opponent of these revisions? Anyone here who would like to make a comment regarding, or a comment regarding, is an opponent of these revisions? Anyone who would like to just make a comment?
So, I know that the bonding, the timing of the bonding, the amount of bonding has been an issue in the past. Have we revised that? I know we revised it a few years ago. Have we looked at any further revisions or are we within reason of all the other counties around?
So, when we revised it, when I wasn't here, we revised it three years ago or how many years ago it was. We changed it from a five-year maintenance bond to a three-year maintenance bond. And then there was language in there allowing that three years to be extended based upon build-out of the subdivision. We actually removed that language about the build-out and subdivision. It's too hard to administer. So, we just made it a flat three years and that is consistent with what we're seeing around.
The others who would like to just make a comment? This hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
You now have a interview. Tiffany, if you'd like to come down, please. We're interviewing you for a presentation on your regional planning mission.
Correct, yes.
Is there anything you'd like to tell us, why you'd like to do that?
Yeah, sure. I work at the Family Children First Council and I work with a lot of families, no income restrictions. But a lot of them are underprivileged, living poverty or close to it. So, I think I could come to the table and bring some knowledge and expertise with those families that we work with and all families and children in Fairfield County.
Thank you. Very exciting. Much pleasure. I appreciate all the work you do with the Family Children First and appreciate your approach. And as a fellow in the hearing tonight, I, you know, excited about you representing the northwest part of the county in that group. So, you just heard about the really fun, exciting things that regional planning gets to do. I guess, you know, the question is, you know, when you're talking about digging into something like this, it's not something to take lightly. This is a probably important position as Fairfield County kicks it in high gear. Are you able to make the time commitment to make this happen?
I actually knew that question was coming. So, I thought about it. I do have three children who are very active. But we ensure that every time we join in the activity, we have heartful buddies. So, I'm good. And my daughter turns 16 on the 9th and her driver's license test is on the 10th. So, we are really excited to have an extra driver and also help us out. So, yes, I'm confident that I can do it.
You know, every time we have one of these interviews, we talk about the appreciation for people who are willing to volunteer their time and expertise. Because things like this are really important in the future of Fairfield County. So, I'm grateful for your willingness.
Yeah, thank you.
Davis, any questions?
No, I don't have questions. Always good to see you and thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Tiffany, I always appreciate your work and your willingness to step up in this regard. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, we have with us today Dr. David O'Leary, who would like to talk a little bit about developmental disabilities.
Morning. I know that the end of the year is a busy time. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk for just a few minutes about what's happening at Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. For one young man, he had a dream of going to college and that was his goal since he was young. His first step was applying and receiving an acceptance letter to make that dream a reality. But living independently and managing his studies posed some significant challenges, especially finding the right support for him while he was far away from home. With the support of Fairfield D E, this young man contacted more than 40 different providers before he was able to secure reliable support. He also took the initiative to advocate for himself, training his direct support professionals on his specific needs, which boosted his confidence and independence. Now, he is on his way to fulfilling his educational dreams and career aspirations as a student enrolled in college. J B is eight and a half years old and is a child full of life who enjoys sled hockey and riding his go-kart outdoors. However, he often runs into barriers in his home where he relies on his family to complete simple tasks for him. Because of his short stature, he can't reach light switches. And even when he's tried to use a reacher to assist, sometimes one isn't always available or in the area that he finds himself. So, J B had to get someone, his sister or his parents, to do something as simple as turn a light switch on for him or else he would sit in the room in the dark. He also has issues with his hands and can't use them often because he is using them to move himself around his environment. In talking with J B and his family, a plan to get some simple devices to help him like an Alexa Echo device, smart light bulbs for his bedroom and rechargeable motion lights for his closets, as well as low-tech objects were put into place. During a recent visit, our assistive technology coordinator watched J B use these relatively low-tech and inexpensive solutions to pick things up from one room and move them to another room. He was having a dance party in his bedroom, controlling the Alexa with his voice, telling it what music to play and what to do with the lights that were in his room. His mother sent us a video showing him getting into bed and turning on the lights and changing it to blue, his preferred color. To do any of this previously was impossible for this child. But with these simple assistive technology solutions, he can do it all on his own. These are just a couple of stories out of literally hundreds where people are living and working and playing and most importantly, belonging in their communities. That's the work that Fairfield D E is engaged in every single day. At Fairfield D E, we exist to bring about a vibrant community where people lead lives of greater independence and make meaningful contributions. Fairfield D E currently employs 165 team members who are committed to that mission, to our vision of recognizing a community that recognizes the value of every single person and our values that drive the work that we do. Currently, we support about 1,900 individuals, 1,861. And that's compared 10 years ago to 1,181, an increase of over 60%. Based on the four-year average growth that we are seeing in Fairfield D E, we expect that by 2030, we will be serving more than 3,000 individuals here in Fairfield County. The number of children that we support in Fairfield County continues to grow. In early intervention, which is ages birth to three, we've seen a 52% increase to 438 children over the last 10 years. We continue to see a rise, not only in this age group, but in kids who are three to 21 as well. Our services to kids and adults in Fairfield County are about equal. Half are adult age and half are kids. As is the case in all 88 counties in Ohio, Fairfield D E is a levy-funded organization. Most of our funding comes from local taxpayer dollars. In 2023, 71% of our total revenue was generated through property tax levies. We currently operate three levies. Two of these levies are continuing, one that was passed in 1998 and one that was passed in 2005. Both of those are obviously at this point collecting at a very low effective millage when compared to what they were collecting and what they were passed on back in 98 and 05. In 2015, the board of Fairfield County passed a 1.85 mil levy, which will have its last collection next year. That was a 10-year term limited levy that generates approximately $7.3 million toward our $26 million annual budget. The remainder of our funding comes from federal and state governments, from the Department of Education and from the Department of Medicaid. When it comes to our expenditures, our salary and benefits consist of about $11 million of our annual budget. It's important to note that Fairfield D E is a service-based organization. It's not a surprise then that our largest lines, our salary and benefits, we have to have people doing the work that we're doing. Fairfield D E by statute is required to both coordinate and fund the services. It used to be 10 years ago, we provided a lot of services. You would remember that the Workforce Center used to be our Opportunity Center, where we had a shelter workshop with more than 100 people who were receiving service that we provided there. The State Department required that we divest ourself of that business. And so, we very minimally provide services. We rely, much like an ad of age would rely, on an outside group of providers to provide the service to people with disabilities. We coordinate that service with them and with the community and then we fund those services as well. Now, a few exceptions would include Forest Road School, which we still operate, as well as early intervention, which is a rec service and from behavior support. But in general, the core function of the county board is to coordinate and fund services for people. Now, as we look at the way that we expended our dollars, you'll see this top line outlines the overall salary and benefits for our organization. And when you see the child, provider, community resource and service and support lines, you'll note that they make up the bulk, some 70-plus percent, 75% of the total investment. That means that the dollars being invested in people who are supporting people with developmental disabilities. Administration and operations salary lines don't come near the actual coordination or funding of service lines that you see. The total spend then you see also matches that with child, provider and community resource and service and support administration being a huge part of that budget. With administration is only 10% and provider and community resource 15. In other words, 75% of our budget is going to support people with disabilities in the community. Now, we operate through the Ohio Department of Medicaid with regard to waivers that are offered to people with disabilities when local funding is unable to meet their needs. Fairfield D E leverages local dollars to draw down federal funding to support people. Currently, it's about 65% of every dollar the federal government will pay and about 35% that we pay through local dollars. In state fiscal year '24, that was $21 million of services authorized through Medicaid waivers, which 13.8 billion was funded by the state, or by the federal government, 2.8 by the state and 4.6 by Fairfield D E. When we look at the waiver match, which is our next highest line, it's how we fund services for people. It's, growth has been significant. So, when you see the bars, what the bars are, are the number of waivers we have authorized in our county. It currently sits at a little over 400, close to 500. The line that's important to note is the middle line that you see projecting up very, very high. That is our amount of dollars that local match is requiring us to pay. Based on the growth of what we've seen because of wage increases for providers, because everything has become more expensive than it was just a few years ago, we project that in the next five years, our total Medicaid liability, which we must meet, will be more than $33 million over that particular year. So, as you start talking about this from a business point of view and understand that we want to annualize that liability out over a period of time, the liability, the debt, if you will, on the county board is that $33 million. It's going to continue to grow. I hope it's evident by just a few stories and the information that I'm sharing that Fairfield D E is committed to being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. We passed our last levy 10 years ago. We're so grateful to the commissioners and to our local elected officials and to the people of Fairfield County for entrusting us with those dollars. One of our core values, we have six core values. One of them is being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, being fiscally responsible. Every single day, every decision that we make is filtered through that value to ensure that we're utilizing every dollar we can before we begin to utilize local dollars as we support people in Fairfield County. Now, as we continue to support people and as we have to meet this Medicaid match with the state, it requires that we take action on the 10-year levy that is expiring at the end of next year. We don't simply want to come when we have to just to get more money. This is because the term is ending. And in January, we'll be bringing a resolution to the commissioners asking for a renewal of this levy for five years. And we believe that because we have worked to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, that a renewal, as we've kept our promise to taxpayers over the next 10 years to invest these dollars wisely and that same rate over the next five years will sustain us and get us just about where we need to be as we move forward through 2030. So, what we're asking for is that the commissioners consider this and the taxpayers of Fairfield County simply renew this levy. Now, in 2030, we'll be back and we're going to have to ask for new money. There's no way that the current rate that we are renewing at will get us any further than 2030. But today, for the next five years, we believe that a simple renewal that currently exists will work. In other words, Fairfield D E is increasing independence and not your taxes as we move through these next five years. You can see our budget projections up here. This is what it looks like as we work through those five years. The most important line is that very bottom line and it's where you see that in 2030, well, I think we can get most of the way there. Now, we are very fiscally conservative in our budgeting, our spending for sure and certainly our budgeting. Having less than 10% of cash carryover in that last year doesn't make my joy complete. But we do get through that year and then you can see a $15 million deficit in the next year if this levy isn't at least renewed. And renewal at 7.1 million isn't going to get us to that. And so, we will have to ask for new in 2030. But today and for the next five years, we are asking that as we continue to support the 1,900 people currently in Fairfield County and as we prepare to support over the next five years, 3,000 people in Fairfield County, that the commissioners would look kindly upon our request to place a renewal on the ballot for May of 2025 of the current levy that is in place. As I wrap up my comments, I placed before you a letter. We have a financial advisory committee that is completely disconnected from the county board. They do not have people who are supported by the county board. They don't sit on a county board. This is a committee of certified public accountants across Fairfield County who have met with us, who have reviewed our books and who are of the opinion that not only have we been good stewards of taxpayer dollars over these last 10 years of this levy, but that the current financial situation we are in with the levy expiring next year requires that we take action. And they have endorsed the fact that we're requesting a levy renewal at the current rate for 2025. With that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Davis?
I don't have questions. Just on the renewal, you know, the state legislature is looking at recalibrating local government's ability to call some of these things. Some of these names were used in, but on the renewal, you pick up the inflationary value of the market?
We do not. Replacement would allow us to pick that up. We pick up new bill, but it's not going to, yes, Dr. Brown is confirming what I believe. We've been working with the honor to prepare for this. So, if we replaced it, it would, we would pick all of that up. But it would, it would amount to, based on calculations, about a $20 increase per $100,000 valuation. At this particular point, well, that would make us feel a lot more comfortable, you know, as we move through these next five years. Pretty confident that even as we see these things increasing, that a renewal will get us where we need to get.
But when the renewal process, when you say to someone, "Your taxes will not go up," you actually mean it?
That's exactly right. They will not go up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate the stories at the front end of it. Even I still know what we're trying to do here. And I appreciate your leadership at D E. You're doing a great job.
Well, Dr. O'Leary, I've actually been able to experience some of the good work you do firsthand. I congratulate you and your staff on everything you do for the folks who are less fortunate here in Fairfield County. So, I don't have any questions, but I would be very supportive of Bill O'Leary.
Thank you very much. We are working with Amy. She received just this morning our resolutions. So, we're hoping to have that to you in January if she does her work with that. And I'll just leave by saying thank you. We enjoy unbelievable support and positive relationships with you as a board commissioner, with all of county administration, our elected officials at the federal, state and county and city level. And we know that's not the case everywhere. We hear about stories regarding your colleagues in our superintendent association meetings across the state. And the stories I hear make me thank the good Lord every single time that we meet that that's not the way it is in Fairfield County. I know we say that a lot and a lot of people say that, but it's absolutely true. And I'm appreciative of all the support. And also know we're currently working on two board members. We had some succession on our board. It was positive succession, nothing negative. Many of you would remember we've had situations in the past where that wasn't the case. These were just seasonal lack changes as people moved on. One term limited, another who decided not to renew a term for the next, for the next go-round. And so, we have a list of people we were working with. We know there are people who have applied and we're looking forward in January to being back to talk about those board appointments as you do in your interviews. So, we appreciate your partnership there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Leary.
And thank you to you, Dr. O'Leary, for your assistance with the state A R P funding that you received to help with transits. I think we've got the, that we've received that now and is it on the road?
Well, I'd be disappointed at work because I expect that me and Rick and John and Dan are going to hop in, take a ride in the new van prior to, you know, christening any public use.
And Rick has driven one of the buses, so.
Yeah, we're not going to let him drive.
But thank you for that.
Thank you. So, at this time in the meeting, we allow for public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium and give your name and address. And you are limited to three minutes. Who would like to be first? Right?
All right. Good morning. Ray Steeman from Primrose Facility is my new home here in town, right on 188. And I know coming from background where my wife was a physical therapist, that all these things that this gentleman had been talking about are good. But she always had one question. It seems that the percentage of people that need this help is not only because of population increase, but the percentage of people affected than what is, should be. And she was of belief that most of these problems come from self-infection a lot of times. And it's the way that people are living, what they eat and what they do. And we need to look at the question, "Why?" That was the question why Judy always asked. With that thought in mind, we have to do a little more study. And maybe that's why the future president has put Robert Kennedy Jr. And maybe that's why the future president has put Robert Kennedy Junior in the position that he is. A lot of people don't like what he says, but there is some truth in the background of what he's saying. Lord, as we look at this situation, we pray for these people that are affected by it. It's not of their own accord a lot of times, but it's because we live in a different age. And the solution may start from the very early ages of these people too. And Lord, we thank you for the people that are looking into the situation and trying to help them because we have so much more that we can do. And we praise you and thank you for this time, the privilege we have of living. And we thank you for what you do for us each and every day. We know that the breath that we take was put into our bodies. What the body can do is miraculous. And only you, Lord, can make it happen. Amen.
Thank you, Rick. Who would like to be next, please? Thank you all for coming. Amy, uh, anything on legal?
I was briefly um noticed by the past month or so regarding public records. Just wanted to be a helpful reminder. But an office or a department receives a public records request, they don't have that record. I think the first inclination is to just try and find the record. And I just wanna remind folks, see if you have the record. If you don't, you need to dispose of the request at that point. Instead of saying, well, I'm gonna forward it on to this next office and they can figure, because that gets a lot of trouble with responses and it opens up the county to potential litigation if we don't timely respond to things. So I just thought it would be a good time to kind of remind folks. First analysis, when you receive public records requests, see if you have the record. If not, deny it. If you have the record, at that point, if you need further assistance from our office regarding review, let us know, and we will be able to do the response. Uh, and if you don't have the record, it's not an acceptable response. So that's all I have.
And also maybe a, an add-on, Amy, I know we've talked about this before, is, is people then uh trying to take records that we have and then turn them into something else that is being requested. That's not appropriate either.
That's all I have.
Very good. Any administration update on the?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I wanna start off by welcoming um a new face, uh, but not uh, uh, to a new team. A new face, but a known face, let me say it that way. Jason Grubb, uh, formerly with the Engineers Office. We are welcoming him to our county facilities team as the deputy director. Um, I think it was yesterday, day one?
Yeah, we're about ten hours into this.
All right, and you could not run off. John's not scared you away, right? Anything you wanna share, Jason?
Uh, just, no, thanks to John and, and the team, and I look forward to working with county administration and all the rest of the elected officials as we kind of fill these teams forwards and try to get started with them, help John out and the team. Yeah, thanks for taking the opportunity.
We're happy to have you and excited. John, anything you wanna add?
I, he hit the ground running. The entire warehouse, wanna reorganize it all, so uh, I'm, I'm happy.
I like things to have a certain place.
And, and John, would you mind maybe getting within it just to do a little announcement about Jason for folks? So, you know, cause he's, he will be out and about in different offices and they might be wondering why somebody from the Engineers Office is coming there. They may know him in that context. Welcome aboard, Jason. Uh, wanna share an additional success story from Hicks Partners. Walnut Township was just awarded an eighteen thousand ODNR nature works grant. I know we've talked, uh, when we were talking about renewing that grant there, what that return on investment is. And I think Rick is still working on getting them scheduled after the first of the year to come and, and share. But here's just another example of how that is benefiting not just us, um, but our other friends within the county. Anything you wanna add on that?
Uh, no, it's just um another great opportunity. Just trying to cover the details, but it's uh about eighteen thousand dollar grant uh to go toward playground equipment and other things in one of their local parks. Parks and their uh, Parks Director was super excited and thankful to everybody for help. So it's another thing that one of our local communities got that wouldn't have gotten.
Great, and I think um the townships and the uh other jurisdictions are getting used to uh, that relationship with Hicks Partners and what they need to bring to the table to be successful. Uh, I know it took us a little bit to get that, that ramped up and going. Um, but I think everybody's kind of fallen in and appreciating these additional opportunities. I know Heather and I were just talking with Tiffany um yesterday about opportunities that might be out there for different council uh programs or initiatives that are a priority for council. So um she's gonna be reaching out to um Hicks Partners just for an exploratory conversation to see if they have information and put them on notice. Awesome. Okay, last commission meeting of twenty twenty-four uh will be December the tenth, so next Tuesday. Uh, and it would also include the passage of the twenty twenty-five budget. And the first regular meeting of twenty twenty-five will be January the seventh. The required reorganizational meeting will take place at eight forty-five, that same morning on January the seventh. So changing that up just a little bit there. Uh, next Tuesday at eleven thirty will be the annual holiday open house here at the Historic Courthouse. Uh, we do ask folks to RSVP for that so that we can appropriately plan for food that is graciously donated uh by the county commissioners. We uh, I received a communication from Meals on Wheels regarding their grant um process. So as part of their levy funds, they do set aside a portion of that to be funding local projects and initiatives that are serving older adults in our community. And that budget that they had set forward, they had, they were able to meet all requests um for that process and even add a little additional uh towards transit. Um, so that was uh appreciated and helpful on that front, but they still had about fifteen thousand left over from that budget. And we're looking to be able to provide some help to the Violet Township area for a grocery delivery program with the paramedics up there. And that would be outside of their normal grant process because, one, they didn't get an application for that. It wasn't reviewed in their timely process. So um just bringing that forth for your consideration, and we can do a resolution next week that would just allow them to go outside of that process that we have a, an agreement that spells out how that works.
Very supportive of that. What, what's the new name for Meals on Wheels?
Uh, the hub.
It's gonna take a while to get used to that.
Yeah, and the link for transit. I need to say that too. Yeah, keep trying. Um, let's see. Highlights and resolutions. Uh, review packet contains a list of administrative approvals, and we do have sixty-four resolutions on the agenda today. Uh, bear with me here as I run through and highlight a few of those for us. The first that I'll call to your attention is a resolution to reestablish the twenty twenty-five commission meeting dates. We did have to make some adjustments there, um, so that is before you all. And to keep that clear, we are rescinding that original resolution and replacing it with this one here. We also have a resolution to continue the lease agreement between the commissioners and the South Central Major Crimes Unit. This is for a one-year agreement and held pretty much all the same terms and conditions as the previous lease. We just made some uh tweaks to just simplify a couple of areas, and we've got interim commander Scott Duff here today. Would you like to say anything on that, Scott?
No, I think that uh it's a great opportunity for us. Continue the support and give some place to live. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. We also have a resolution authorizing this, the disposal of surplus property by internet auctions in twenty twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the use of ARP fiscal recovery funding for the rebranding of transit. So we did have a, a little bit left there that we were uh allocating there for transit. We've got a number of different funds assisting with the rebranding. And speaking of that, we will have the um meeting to kind of unveil what the potential uh new logo and rebranding is on tomorrow, Wednesday. So stay tuned for that. Uh, Rick, do you wanna add anything on that?
Just uh, for uh new bus stop signs, which are entirely. The quality stops. I'd have this and it would be nice to uh ask listeners to be able to have more readable signs.
By catching, jumping out at you a little bit more. Okay. Resolution entering into agreement between CFLP and the Commissioners for Recycling Services and Education Program Services for twenty twenty-five. Also have a number of year-end financial resolutions such as a reg- resolution to appropriate from unappropriated for the self-funded insurance fund. This is taking care of kind of the uh payment process while we are not in session. Resolutions to approve repayments of advances, resolutions extending repayment dates, resolutions approving memo expense, memo receipts, and resolutions approving account-to-account transfers. We also have five resolutions appointing individuals to various boards. So we did have uh interviews with Mike Wolf and Joe Palmer for Regional Planning Commission. Uh, in addition to that, we will be adding Mitch Nolan. So the three of them will be appointed to RPC and looking to reappoint Doug Ingram to RPC. For the Port Authority Board, we will be appointing Kathy Bittler, who you interviewed, uh, or you had the opportunity uh to appoint Kathy Bittler, who you interviewed last week, and reappoint Jeff Sauer to the Port Authority Board, and an opportunity to reappoint Matt Johnson and Jason Saul to the RLF. And um, Rick, do you wanna say anything uh on Port Authority or RLF? I think we've talked about RPC sufficiently.
Thank you for. Bittler, I'm so excited to have her join the board. Uh, Jeff Sauer has been a board member, president of the board since the beginning. It's really helped usher us through some really uh, from times here. And Matt Johnson has been our chair of the RLF for a year, and he's agreed to stay on for another three years. And um, very helpful for us, provides a different perspective being of real estate uh attorneys.
Great. Also have a resolution appointing three members and their alternates to the Village of Lithopolis's Tax Incentive Review Council. Engineers Office has a resolution to declare the necessity of the Stringtown Road Culvert Project. You had the viewing on November twelfth and the hearing last week, I'm sorry, uh, had the hearing on November the nineteenth. A resolution to approve a contract with Ornet for VMware Cloud Foundation Software. This is for virtual server management. That is required by the server cluster environment. Also have a resolution approving an agreement between the county prosecutor and Violet Township for the prosecutor to serve as the township's law director. Amy, Stephen, anything on that?
Yes, they're our standard agreement. Uh, we invented a, a, a pretty mild salary raise, but other than that, it's pretty.
Okay, great, thank you. Also have a resolution from RPC authorizing the contract notice to proceed and notice of commencement to Fleck, Flecto LLC for the CDDG Village of Pleasantville Park Concessions and Restroom Pavilion Project. Josh, Holly?
I just wanna say we're excited that we're uh getting this project to be forward. We had to bid this project three times to get a contractor, so. Um, and we have an extension from the state to allow this project to continue.
Great. Next two are yours as well. A resolution to approve the Monomy CRE Final Platte subdivision is in Greenfield Township and was approved by RPC at their August sixth meeting. Anything else there? No? And then there is a resolution on today to approve and adopt um the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four revision of the Fairfield County subdivision regulations. Uh, resolutions to approve the purchase of vehicles. The sheriff's office is purchasing a total of ten vehicles and utilities is purchasing three trucks. Tony, anything there?
Uh, one of the trucks is going to be uh electric, so I'm high on that. And the difference between the cost of other vehicles and that ones.
Thank you.
Did I ask a question? What uh, kind of mileage would you expect to put on that? Given normal usage in a good day?
Given day?
Yeah.
Probably between fifty and eighty miles a day.
Okay, and then with that truck, at any time need to be loaded or towing anything?
Um, I don't, towing probably not often. There's only a few trucks that we do actually pull our generators and stuff with, um, but will be loaded with tools. So, tool box.
So I'm excited that you're trying it, and a couple of issues I would just maybe put a note on is, and you probably already know this stuff, but your mileage in the winter is gonna be lower than your mileage in the summer in terms of your range. How far can I go without charging kind of thing? And then if you tow anything, um, your range is gonna go down by about seventy-five percent.
Yeah, um, it's on state bids, so we saw it on there. It's, it's uh, it's a little, almost ten thousand more than normal, but we hope to get that back in the, in the fuel savings, so.
Your garage out there, does it have two twenty?
Yeah, yeah, we have two twenty. So that's another thing we're trying to figure out with this one is um the charging, how to set that up as far as, we have three days to, you know, there, so. Yeah, options on setting up a charging unit.
Go direct cable from the outlet?
Yeah.
The situation, or put a charger in, whatever you wanna do. Thank you, Mr. President.
And the vehicles that the sheriff is purchasing, uh, those are, uh, we had questioned whether or not they would be utilizing this year's budget to accomplish those twenty twenty-five purchases, and they were able to um get all of that settled. So that's what you're seeing there. We've had to move to kind of moving the purchases into this year budget-wise for next year because of all the outfitting and everything they have to do. So, just closing that loop there. Also have a resolution approving an agreement between Transit and County Lane Gardens for transportation services. Anything on that, Rick?
Who, who is this?
County Lane Gardens.
Say, uh. Thank you.
And I think if I'm recalling correctly, it's a eighteen dollars a trip would be the rate that we would be uh receiving for that contract. Treasurer's Office has a resolution to approve an agreement with Park National Bank for the deposit of public funds. And uh Utilities has a resolution to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six lawn mowing agreement with Enviro Skames. I think that is it. Bart, any budget update?
Um, we did close level four budget entry access uh yesterday. Going through the steps to be prepared for next to the budget approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. At the Record Center today, the revolving loan fund committee will meet at two PM, and RPC will meet at six PM, as Holly spoke about earlier in the hearing. Morpsey Southeast Area of Central Ohio Regional Luncheon is at noon tomorrow at the Pickerington Methodist Hospital. MCU's operating board will meet tomorrow at one thirty PM at the EOC. And the Fairfield Twenty-two Development Alliance Board will meet at the Workforce Center on Thursday, December fifth at eight thirty AM. The commissioners received the following correspondence. A letter from the senior hub Meals on Wheels regarding the allocation of community grant funding, a flyer from the Fairfield County Park District without reach program dates, a thank you card from the Fairfield County Park District from the auditor's office, a memo regarding dog licensing along with an application form to November twenty-first and November set twenty-seventh wins of the week, a memo regarding a new property tax exemption opportunity, and a press release titled Fairfield County Auditor Announces Dog License Information in Virtual Dog Show. The Lancaster Festival sent a letter regarding their twenty twenty-five festival, and the Festival Fair Day Committee sent a thank you card. A list of offices to be voted on for the Fairfield Thirty-three Alliance was submitted. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette had an article by Jeff Barron on December second titled State and County Officials Talk About Possible US Thirty-three I Seventy Connector Road in the Future. Correspondence regarding industrial solar projects was received, and the following newsletters were also received. The MCJDC News, Fairfield DD's Imagine, the Auditor's Ledger, United Ways Newsletter, and the Fairfield County November E News Updates. The review packet also contained a copy of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four draft revisions of the Fairfield County subdivision regulations. The hearing was at nine AM, and the resolution again is on for today for your consideration. That is it.
So, Rick, we have a new uh Twenty-two alliance?
Yeah, and second one because we were going east-west.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Evil of our job, right?
Yeah, that, that's a typo. That's all, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, any?
Yeah, I thought I'd just touch base on uh, my uh Uber experience. Uh, I think that's coming to a close uh soon. If you watch television or watched uh any of the football games recently, you probably noticed the Uber Eats commercials that are now coming on in our market, you know, where they try to tell you that football is just a big scam to get you to eat more food or whatever. you know, where they try to tell you that football is just a big scam to get you to eat more food or whatever. And then what you may not have seen is, say, for example, in the past week, Uber has offered any driver who will drive in this area an extra ten dollars for every trip. Uh, so what they're doing there with their advertising and their incentives to the drivers is they're really making a huge push in this market, um, which kind of eliminates the need for me. Uh, but anyway.
We still need to see.
I appreciate it. I still have a job.
Commissioner Fix.
Uh, yeah, so we're continuing to meet with, um, townships and villages on their land use plans and zoning and, uh, mutual agreements. So, uh, we were with Greenfield Township, um, two weeks ago, and then met with a joint session of Baltimore Village Council and Liberty Township Trustees, and it looks like they now will start down the path of coming up with a, uh, a mutual agreement, a cooperative economic development agreement that hopefully will lead to an N C A and, um, no more fighting over who gets what land.
Commissioner Fix, any new business?
Uh, I'll be attending the C C A Winter Conference this week, uh, hosting a panel on housing naturally. Um, and I look forward to, uh, that three day event.
Commissioner Davis, any, any new business?
You know what? I think I'll just tell a real quick holiday story. I was out on Thanksgiving and I saw this waiter that I recognized from my hobby, uh, playing some poker here and there. And, uh, so I said hi to him, you know, and, uh, it's Thanksgiving, he's working, you know, waiting tables. And, uh, he's telling me, he said, yeah, I'm going to play a tournament tomorrow. It's three hundred and fifty dollars, but I found a guy who wasn't going to go, and he sold me his ticket, uh, for three hundred. So I'm getting in chief, you know, and he was excited. Um, and it, uh, I, I wanted to help him, you know, so I, I, but I didn't want it to be like charitable. So I said, hey, you know what? Will you buy a little bit of your action, you know? Uh, so I gave him fifty bucks. Uh, and frankly, I forgot about it. Uh, then the next day about five o'clock or something or whatever, I get a text from him saying we're down to eighteen. Two hundred and thirteen in the tournament. And then more and more, more texts go. Anyway, he won the whole thing, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So happy Thanksgiving.
Did you take the steak?
I took one half of the steak I was entitled to and donated the rest back to him.
So Lisa, do you have any stories like that?
You can beat.
Doctor Brown?
Just thinking about the season we're heading into and all of our purpose and work, want to say thank you to everybody because all that work is made more meaningful by you and your partnerships. So thank you. Substacks have been approved by the state. An interesting number is the new construction, which is largely residential, is a hundred and seven million for two thousand and twenty-four. That's a record year. So when you have a renewal levy, there is no increase what the agency will get except for new construction. That's why that number is so important, that we monitor. I attended the Violet Township Trustees Meeting last week, and as I walked in, the very first thing they said was happy G I S Day. So I thank you to the commissioners for that proclamation because it was an unexpected greeting and one that I welcomed. We reported on some technological improvements. They were all very much interested in dock link and the lot split application. Um, in addition, I wanted to, um, mention the year end processes. Very thankful to finance and payroll, um, particularly happy with Jojo Harmon, who has a very wonderful way of communicating, very positive. She wants to attend the commissioners meeting as soon as we are able to work that in with the payable schedule. I, I want to welcome her here and just mentioning how much she's interested in some other things that go on in the county. Regarding the fixed asset summaries, those are due December twentieth. If you need a little more time, just reach out to me, and we can coordinate that. Those are self imposed deadlines so that we can meet financial reporting deadlines, which are not self imposed. Year end brings a lot of flurry of activities relating to financial reporting. We do have a new fact sheet for the pre-residential property tax exemption. This is new. We just received the form from the Department of Taxation last week. This is if a property is going to be used for development of a residence, residential properties, then there is an opportunity for tax exemption up to seven years during that improvement. And that is a county auditor process that's new, and it is something that we're eager for our first applications, which we expect will be coming relatively soon. We also have a new fact sheet called Interning the Workforce, which goes through some of the lessons we've learned with interns. We've shared it with some other agencies who appreciated it, and if you would like that, it's a good model for even the private sector who might be thinking of interns, what they could do with interns. Dog licenses are due January thirty-first. That's the last day you could get them. So it's time to sign up for that. The map of the month is where you're going to find a white Christmas. So that's been a popular one. And as of the end of December, sixty-four point three million has been receiveded to the general fund. That's ninety-seven percent of the estimated sixty-six point one million. Sales tax still slightly lower than the estimate. Property taxes slightly higher. Um, we need about one point eight million to receive a hundred percent. We'll do that. We'll be in the sweet spot between a hundred and a hundred and ten. That's a hundred and hundred and ten, the actual is what we are expecting to be that sweet spot to allow for proper budgeting. So, um, we'll, we'll be there and, uh, don't anticipate any adjustments for that. We've adopted a J F S family, and that's been, um, a really good team building experience because every Monday morning prior to our all team meeting, we go over what we were able to get the week and what the best deals were for the toys that we were purchasing. So just wanted to mention that while it's good for the families, it can be very, very good for your team too. It's a really fun thing to do together. Finally, I just want to mention that I've been serving on the Destination Downtown Special Improvement Board since twenty-one. Going to be resigning that position, so you need to appoint someone, um, to serve it on your behalf. It could be Colleen, she already serves on that board. It could be somebody else, and I'll give you a formal letter of recognition for resignation for that day.
Thank you. Tony? Um, couple of things. The O dot Pickering Road Interchange, um, bidding for a counter offer, and they also want a right of entry for that property. You do that before you're here. Uh, and next week I will be here, but you'll have an agreement for, uh, farm lease agreements from, for farmers. Um, and then we'll also have a, um, contract for the waterline project. And. Good. Uh, had a great meeting with Service Solutions, anybody's German on these, they've seen their, uh, building improvements that they're doing out there. This is ultimately going to be a half a billion dollar, uh, project. Um, so within Google, the second largest project ever. So, uh, excited about that. Uh, we have eighty-four one one, uh, one Congress on Friday, uh, where as the president mode, I'll have an opportunity to speak and involve some other things there. So always great to prepare for county just to be a big part of the region. I think it's such a long way. Uh, in the last few years of being recognized as a leader in the region, and that's exciting. And, uh, next Friday, we will have our own local mini eighty-four one one, which is our, uh, economic update at the Workforce Center. It's open, it's free for everybody. It starts at three thirty next Friday. So I have a great speaker talking about the economy and the future and what that looks like. So, uh, not as many people there as, uh, they fit plenty.
Just, uh, happy again to have Jason on board, and, uh, we're hitting some, uh, the new projects here coming, especially with the Workforce Center. And, uh, that's not ornaments in the walls. They're working on the unit right here. And so the weird noises you hear.
I would say we're.
This today will be the, uh, new fresh air.
I mean, couldn't be better.
We have.
It was, yeah, it was getting done as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, so Eugene McCullough from our service desk team, he had an opportunity as, uh, the court I T manager, Dan Thompson, um, moved on, um, in his resignation, Eugene McCullough had an opportunity to take that position with the force next door. So, um, while we are definitely, um, sad to see Eugene leave our team, uh, we are excited for his opportunity, one, and then just the partnership that there can be, um, through that. So he will begin there, um, in a couple of weeks. And we are actively looking for filling his bits.
Assuming the best of, yeah. Heather? So how's, uh, how's your fundraising and?
Holiday. Holiday. Swing definitely going very, very well. But since the holiday here and early at the office, we see, uh, started to anticipate significant, uh, requests for animals in the, you know, stairs and pick up the, I guess. Another thing to think about is we are, um, getting yesterday participating some partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters and the Holiday Scouts. So, yeah, we, we, we can drive by. We have all the windows painted and, um, staff can be the time and equipment to paint and decorate the lobby in a peanut steam that will allow, uh, folks participating in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Holiday Scout. They're trying to come by and earn points by taking a photo, and then on two special days, the fourth and the tenth, they can, um, bring by a unwrapped toy and get extra certain. Maybe highlight the tree downstairs. Uh, we have a tree as part of our holiday installation job in the administrative courthouse lobby downstairs. Ornaments off, um, not represent a wish or gift for a child, even, um, leave it under the tree when we get that, that type of services. Those can be both items for children and young.
He strives, he's here, he was doing the budget.
What a fleet is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States. One nation underground in the way they physical, the liberty and justice.
Opening announcements.
There are no new announcements.
Approval, approval minutes for November nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Minutes past three zero from the Commissioner's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot A. A resolution rescinding Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten dot twenty-nine dot B and reestablishing the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners twenty twenty-five review session, regular meetings and special meeting dates.
The Commissioners, I move items A through V.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for the Fairfield County Amage Board. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot W, a resolution to approve an account to account transfer.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Auditor, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot X. A resolution to approve an additional cash change drawer for the county auditor.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
To support the location at the clerk of courts during the dog license season. Once that concludes, we will return the change drawer.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for the Fairfield County Board of Development Disabilities. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot Y. A resolution authorizing a fund to fund transfer for Fairfield County Board of D D Fund twenty sixty to Fairfield County Board of D V Capital Improvements Fund thirty-six ninety-eight.
The Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, I move items Y and Z.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot A A. A resolution approving an account to account transfer into a major expenditure expenditure object category, Fund one zero zero one, Common Pleas General Fund.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Domestic Relations Court, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot B B. A resolution authorizing an account to account transfer for the adjustment of capital.
Fairfield County Domestic Relations Court, I move items B B and C C.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot D D. A resolution to approve advertising for the B L O thirty-six F A I C R twenty one point nine six four Pickerington Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Fairfield County Engineer, I move items D D, E E, F F, G G, and H H.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for the Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot I I. A resolution authorizing the approval of repayment of advance to the general fund, Fund seventy-five twenty-one, sub fund eighty-one sixty, helping grow early intervention.
And Family, Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, I move items I I and J J.
Discussion.
Always.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero for Fairfield County Information Technology. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot K K, a resolution to approve a contract for VMware Cloud Foundation Software Licensing between Ornet and the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot L L. A resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of bus passes paid to Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit as a memo expenditure for Fund twenty seventy-two Public Children's Services.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items L L through P P.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot Q Q. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and major expenditure object category for juvenile court, Fund twenty-six thirty special projects.
Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items Q Q through U U.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Prosecutor, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot B B. A resolution authorizing approval of an agreement by and between the Fairfield County Prosecutor and the Township.
So moved.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot W W. A resolution authorizing contract notice to proceed and notice of commencement to Flecto LLC for T D B G P Y two thousand and twenty-two Village Pleasantville Lot Park Concessions and Restroom Pavilion Project.
Fairfield County Regional Planning, I move items W W through Y Y.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot Z Z. A resolution to approve the purchase of three unmarked vehicles from grave Chrysler Jeep Dodge following a competitive invitation to bid process.
Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items Z Z and triple A.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot B B B. A resolution to request appropriations for receipts for two thousand and twenty-one drug law enforcement grant seventy-eight thirty.
Their South Central Major Crimes Unit, I move items triple B through triple D.
Discussion.
Just another opportunity to thank Christine Owen for her work here on being able to, um, get some reimbursements for grant funds.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Transit, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot. Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Transit, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot E E E. A resolution authorizing approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Public Transit and Country Lane Gardens.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
It is in um Thornville.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For the Fairfield County Treasurer, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot F F F. A resolution to approve an agreement for the positive public funds between Park National Bank, the National Banking Association, and Fairfield County Drive.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution twenty twenty-four twelve dot three dot G G G. A resolution authorizing approval of an agreement between Bond Holding Pickerington LLC and the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners.
For Fairfield County Utilities, I move items triple G through triple K.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dot three dot L L L. A resolution authorizing approval of payment of invoices for departments needing Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Good.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for December tenth at nine A M.
Any additional items to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time?
That was scheduled for seconds. You had the main base. And then I'm supposed to be in the engineer's office at eleven thirty, right? Are you guys planning on being at main back?
Yes.
So this should have.
Yeah, we.
Any, oh, Michael must.
Michael says the the.
Right. Any additional items to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Looking for a. Second. On favor, signify the same line.
Aye.
We are.